I'm Bame.
Here.
Pat Bird.
Here.
Joe Fink.
Here.
Tom Muller.
Here.
Jeff Peterson. Martha Sandholm.
Here.
Louise Shutz.
Here.
Judy Waller.
Here.
Lynn Zentner. Did you all join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At the conclusion of the open session this evening, the Board of Education will consider adjourning into executive closed session pursuant to the Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eighty-five, per inch, one per inch sheet, for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any staff. Specifically, review of staff contracts, and that would be the master agreement negotiations. The Board may reconvene into open session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eighty-five, per inch, two, if necessary, to act on considerations given during the executive session. Next item is informational discussion items. A would be voucher status, and Lynn Zentner's not through this evening. Frank?
Uh, Nora's Pam. Um, I spoke with Pam this afternoon. She and Lynn did go through the vouchers. Again, we're not going to be approving uh, any of the vouchers tonight. Uh, Lynn had no questions on any of the items that were listed. Uh, Pam noted that this is the smallest voucher package that we've had thus far this year. Uh, the one in June might be a little bit smaller because as we get to the end of the year, sometimes they get smaller. The biggest ones tend to be in August, September. So unless any of the other board members have points that they would like to uh, make about any particular item, I think we can forward them.
Is there any on Joe?
I just wanna reiterate what Frank said, uh, 'cause I received a phone call tonight from Lynn Zentner saying she couldn't make the meeting, but she did go through the vouchers and just what Frank said, and that we wouldn't need to vote on until next week. But everything seemed in order.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Um, and for the record, Jeff Peterson did communicate with me also. He is not able to be heard because he's out of town. Well, communicated that Lynn is not able to join us this evening as well. Uh, item B, solar panels, solar Olympics at the high school. Kathy Ordman?
Hi, I'm Kathy Ordman, and um, I'm a science teacher here at Merrill High School. The reason we're here tonight is because um, a couple of us have gotten together and wrote our application for the solar panels for the high school, which we did receive. Um, as part of a working relationship with Wisconsin Public Service. And they have donated the solar panels, which cost about twenty thousand dollars. They also have agreed to um, maintain those solar panels for the next fifteen years. So, uh, the reason we wrote the grant was because I was teaching environmental science. At the time, we did a unit on alternative energy, and um, I had written a small grant first for getting solar panels in the classroom, these little ones that you can use to power solar cars. We've got a few here, um, some of the solar panels. We'll show you what they look like.
Excellent.
Sure. That's great.
Um, the materials in this box were all donated by Wisconsin Public Service. About a month ago, there were four teachers from the high school, uh, three science teachers, and then one from the tech ed department that had gone to um, Green Bay, where we were in service on how to use the solar panels and the information that you can get in the classroom. So they gave us this binder here, a couple of these. These have lesson plans, fifteen different lesson plans that you can use in the science classroom as well as some of the other classrooms. They have addressed um, they also put in here which standards would be addressed in both um, well, math, social studies, English, as well as science. So it does cover broad, broad-based. Uh, they gave all kinds of fun little goodies here. Uh, some of these solar panels are kinda neat. The small grant that I had applied for was eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. With that, I bought enough solar panels to supply uh, three of my classrooms, so about thirty solar panels. And um, I also bought a solar panel that can be attached to portable equipment. And that I donated to the school forest, 'cause I figured if they take the laptop out into the um, out into the, the woods and want to collect some data. So here's one of the solar panels that they gave. They gave what, ninety? These themselves probably cost about a hundred dollars. So solar panels are pretty, pretty expensive, but it's a good alternative energy. The information that we'll get will attach to um, we'll get readings from it on the internet, so anybody can access it anytime, so you can see what kind of energy output we're getting while the solar panels are on the roof. Uh, one of the other things that, that um, Wisconsin Public Service wants us to do is to also start an extracurricular called um, Solar Olympics. And so tonight, I have brought with me a student that is very interested in taking part of this, and so Beth Stabaki is here to tell you a little bit about Solar Olympics.
Hi, um, I'm Elizabeth Danz. Let you off, so I'm just gonna stand right here. Um, as a high school junior, I am very excited about being able to participate in the Solar Olympics my senior year. I am going to college to be a high school science teacher, so this experience will be one of a kind and very rewarding. And I also believe this will be a very wonderful experience for me. Um, the solar panels will be used in environmental science class, as I was also said, um, which is now taught by Mr. Johnson. And I asked him earlier today, and he said that he will be showing the students how they work, and they'll be observing them. He said he may also get a couple of experiments in with the solar panels. And in Mr. Hermann's class, he has physics, we, which I will be taking this year, he'll be using the readings and um, how much energy they give off, et cetera. And the readings will be coming off the internet, and so we'll be able to keep a day-to-day record, or a record of how much energy those panels use. And for this... Um, for the Solar Olympics, this was this year's thing, which just happened yesterday.
It's at Anheal Stadium statewide?
Yeah, and they're held in Green Bay. Um, what they do is you get a group of kids together, and you have to make a solar cooker, a solar water heater, a solar car, somebody writes a solar essay, and then you do a solar sculpture, and then all the, all the um, schools that go down there, they all participate in a solar jeopardy game at the Olympics. It's just like a, a fun thing. Um, every, every category is worth a hundred points. Um, like, for example, the solar cooker here, graded on invention, the quality, artistic expression, performance, stuff like that. It would be a lot of fun, and I'm looking forward to participating in it next year.
Does anybody have any questions for Jeff?
Uh, Mr. Hermann Kade agreed to come along. He knows a little bit more about the actual workings of this photovoltaic system. I kinda give it to the alternative energy workings of the...
Again, the solar panels that are gonna be put onto the roof, not used to this, I teach freshmen, and I don't like to have them behind my back, and it's like, at the same time, so I'm not sure which way to look here. But anyway, uh, with the solar panels that are gonna be placed on the roof, there's also a couple websites where you can get the information. And that's what I'm gonna be more interested in, is the information that we get from these solar pallet, the solar panels. And um, the first page there, page one kinda gives you an overview of what's the Wisconsin Public Service is doing as far as the solar-wise program for schools is concerned. And this is off one of their websites, and I just took that and uh, the webpage is down in the bottom left-hand corner, if you'd like to access it yourself, and see what they have, other things. There's all kinds of stuff, a lot of links on here that you could take a look at. Uh, but anyway, uh, they have a solar cars pictured there on the side, uh, Green Beach, Green Bay East High School. I had put that together. Uh, when we have the dedication of the solar panels themselves next school year. Um, we're hoping to get the, that truck over here so people can see what the solar-powered vehicle could look like. Then on page two, uh, here it's another web, or another page off that site. Uh, the participating schools right now, there is nine schools that have solar panels on the roof. You can see the small map there, the schools. There's two in our area, Mozenee and Antigo both in our area have solar panels at this time. And uh, we'll be uh, getting ours this summer, and so there's a small map to show what it is. Page three is what I'm really considered are interested in. This Solar Electric Power Association, it takes in more than just Wisconsin, it's other schools, or other states also, and other places. And I'm interested in, if you take a look at the left-hand side, under solar basics there, where it says PV performance data, that's is the photovoltaic cells that are going to be on the roof. We can access not only the seller, solar cells that are on our roof and get data off the internet, but also any solar cell that is listed, and there's gonna be a little list that goes a little bit further in. But any of them, any place around the country, and in the last couple pages, I'll explain a little bit of the data and what some of it looks like, and things like that that we'll be able to get from this. Uh, so anyway, you could access, again, down in the lower right-hand corner, it is the webpage that you could access if you wanna take a look at the same information yourself. The uh, next page uh, is where you're going to the site, and if you take a look at page five at the top of the page there, that is a kind of a schematic drawing of what our solar panel cells will look like. We'll have eight cells. Each cell is gonna be approximately four by six feet. Uh, each one puts out about three hundred watts, uh, so that'd be a total of about two point four kilowatts at peak solar or at peak sun. So we'll have about a two and a half uh, kilowatt solar panel on the roof. Uh, in the middle there, in the dark line, that talks about the data logger system. Um, that will be hooked to the internet. You can see the modem, uh, phone line, all of this, obviously. The phone lines and stuff like that will be paid for by uh, public service, so we don't have to worry about incurring any of that expense. Uh, there will be wind speed and temperature sensors up there, so we will be getting, we'll get a little bit of weather data from that, uh, wind speed, temperature-type data from it. And uh, some of the other things as far as, you can see that it will go into the grid. So if there's ever a day that we're not using two point four kilowatts hours of uh, power in this building, we could be selling it back to them. And Greg's laughing because obviously, what we use here probably would, I don't know, I can't even guess, but...
What, five hundred times?
But yeah, about five hundred times. So anyway, there would be a possibility of us selling this back, but I don't think it's gonna happen. Um, the next page there, page six, lists other states that have similar programs going. Arizona, California, and down, and Wisconsin, down at the bottom there. Uh, and so those are other states where similar programs are, and that you can access their data and see what's happening in those states as compared to ours. Page seven then, lists the solar panels in Wisconsin. Uh, the utility that's furnished them all is, of course, WPS, Antigo, Brussels, Green Bay, Mozenee, Waupaca, and on down the list. And it talks about the rating of each one of those. Uh, Antigo with the highest, ten point six kilowatts, and well, Brussels about the same, but anyway. And on down, uh, those uh, solar panels are in operation right now. If you take a look at page eight, this is a picture, this is what's on the internet for each one of these systems. This is the Mozenee system, uh, just happened to look at that one, one of the close ones. And the picture of the solar panel installation on the roof of the building. Um, on the left-hand side then, they have some uh, data as far as the, where it's at, and all kinds of stuff like that. But anyway, we'll have similar information about our school on the web with those same kind of information. Now here's page nine, is what I'm really kinda interested in. I had to redo this to make it fit on one page, but this is a solar data that's been collected from the Mozenee system for the last week. And if you notice along the bottom there, uh, May second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, those are the uh, data. And this graph is a graph of how much power it is putting out as compared to what its maximum is, uh, on any one of those particular days. I can, by clicking on the little button below that, expand that to a daily-type thing, so you can actually see what the amount of power is putting out on an hourly basis, if you wanna get that uh, detailed on it. And I hope that we may be able to do that in physics. If you take a look there, on uh, May second, May third, uh, when was it, second, Friday last week, Saturday? Anyway, not much sun those two days. Uh, you can see that the solar output on those couple days was down. Uh, a little sporadic during the day. On the third, it was, looked like possibly in the morning, we had more sun, and then it must've got cloudy around noon. And then, again, we got a little bit more sun on the third. Uh, the fourth, what was, was fourth Friday?
Friday.
Okay, fourth was Friday. We had the uh, uh, relays out here, and it was a pretty nice day to attract me, so. Uh, I noticed we had pretty good solar production down there at Mozenee. Uh, Sunday, or Saturday, the fifth, was a little bit worse. Sunday. Uh, today, must, I didn't get out of the building today, but it looks like it must've been a pretty nice day most of the day. Uh, my room doesn't have any windows in it, so I don't get to see outside very often, but the, the kids were saying it was really nice. And as you can see, uh, it was kind of a nicer day today on the eighth. Not to make any of you feel bad, but the last page is Lake Havasu, Arizona. And notice the graph there, it looks like there was never cloudy in Lake Havasu. And uh, you're laughing 'cause you're looking forward to getting down there, I suppose? Anyway, you can see the peak outputs, uh, they hit it every day, and it doesn't look like there was ever a cloud for the last week. Now like I said, I can click on, or you can take a look at this, you can see the same data on your computers at home if you're on the internet. You can click on the bottom data, for example, where the little arrow is on this picture on the last page. And um, I could then take a look at the data for May fifth at an hourly basis. Uh, not only could I look at it as what is the maximum that could be put out by that panel, or that set of panels, but what was actually put out on the daily-type readings. Uh, you can download this, either in this kind of form, you can download it in uh, graphical form besides this, uh, data output form. So there's different ways you can get that out. There's all, if you look along the bottom there where it says homepage, new info, month date. Uh, you can get data on these all the way back from when they're installed. Uh, and I think it's gonna be real interesting comparing what our data is here in the northern part of the state as compared to um, other panels that are around the state and in other states. And that's what I'm looking forward to using it for in that kind of a situation. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Muller?
Uh, this summer is when they'll be installing the panels, so they want to have a new thing ceremony, so anybody's welcome to that. They haven't told us what date, uh, it will be, but I'll let you guys know. So, have to come and see.
Question Kathy, I don't like to see Anheal beat us at anything. Um, is there a chance that we would add panels in the future to get up to their ten point six kilowatt output?
The program that they use for this is um, through donations that, that people that are part of Wisconsin Public Service, the customers of that. So my guess is that they will probably try and spread it out to as many schools as they can. Although I do get a lot of information writing further grants with, about alternative energy. So whether it goes in the direction of solar panels or not, I don't, I don't know. And whether I write anymore, I don't know.
Frank?
Two Thursdays ago, I had an opportunity to spend the morning at a regional WPS meeting in Wausau. And the focus of the meeting was predominantly for manufacturing interests in the area, uh, and talking about selling power back to WPS when they would have downtimes for maintenance projects in the summer and the like. And there, WPS is really concerned about uh, the ability of their service to have a steady, ongoing flow of electricity for all of the needs that exist in our area. So they're trying to do everything that they can to provide manufacturers, big users of electricity opportunities, you know, to help the system out. Uh, and they're also making great efforts in the public schools to create an interest level on the part of students uh, to become involved with this whole process as well. I really appreciate what Kathy has done in initiating this, this uh, program with WPS. I, I think it provides a great opportunity for our students and our district to become involved in something that is obviously, obviously going to be a natural question before very long. On the news tonight, they're talking about the rolling blackouts in California again today. So I really appreciate that, and I think this will be good for all of us.
Any further questions? Louise?
I, I would just like to support very much the, the concept of participating in the, the Solar Olympics. Um, I think it's important for the kids to be involved in, in academic types of competition. And, and we haven't had it in science for the last couple of years.
Thank you. Joe?
Uh, first of all, I fully support this concept also, and I appreciate the presentation tonight, but I do have a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, I mean, I don't think you folks can answer this, but maybe Mr. Henson at a later date or even tonight, but what happened to the Science Olympiad?
Oh, I can answer that.
It's been going on for twelve years, and then this year we're not having it?
I'm not able to answer that, but...
Kathy?
Whoever can.
Um, the Science Olympiad, we did not have a team this year. Last year was the last year that we had a team. Um, so what we have done is I've created a proposal to use the money for Science Olympias to transfer over to Solar Olympiad as an extracurricular.
Sure, and that makes sense, but why don't we have a team this year? Can anyone answer that?
Yeah, uh, the person that was running the team, Janine LaBord, um, had asked for help with getting another person, an assistant, to be paid. And uh, we were told that there were not funds available for that, um, for that purpose. And so because of the amount of time that it takes, and with a lot of the high school having six classes, um, she felt that it would be too much to, to partake in that process. Um, I did help her with it last year, but this year, we're having six classes, so we didn't have a chance to, to, I didn't mind taking on.
Thank you. Uh, could I also ask the, Pat, sorry, the bottom line, besides getting young people interested in alternative um, energy sources, what's the bottom-line benefit to match for this process?
Oh, well, there's that. One, I think it will benefit the community, because it gets alternative energy out there, and you actually see a working model. And then, two, um, it, it gives the, the school a chance to have something, you know, for free. I mean, if, one, it will have energy to be put into the system that we don't have to pay for, um, so it will cut down. Uh, I talked to my students about it, and we were looking at, at how much, how much energy would we save per classroom, um, you know, over time. And so we're looking at maybe about thirty dollars per day, um, if it's working at maximum. Again, a lot of these numbers are if, because of the amount of cloud and how much energy output, you know, you really don't take quite the budget. But, um, you know, it does save the school district some money, and uh, one, you're, I mean, you're also working with a business in the area, one that's focused on improving education across the curriculum, not only in science, but across the curriculum, and combining those. Um, as a matter of fact, Pete McConnell was the teacher that came with, and he is already volunteering to work on building the solar cars next year for the Solar Olympiad team. Um, I talked with Jean English, who's our, our teacher here, and she's really excited about getting students involved to build the solar sculpture. Uh, she approached me the other day and said, hey, I have a bunch of students that are interested in, uh, what kind of materials should we look at? And so we talked a little bit about maybe getting a budget together, which we can use this, um, Science Olympiad funds up here for that.
Thank you very much.
Louise, can you add something?
I'd like, I'd like for us to have science competitions, but if we could keep the money just, I mean, the money that's, that's there right now, if it could be, if it could be marked for science competitions, because, you know, right now we have Kathy, and she's very excited about this. Um, I used to do Science Olympiad, Janine used to do Science Olympiad, and, you know, things kinda change, so if somehow...
And, and I did, I helped out with Science Olympiad ever since I've been involved in the schools. It's an excellent opportunity, and it, it's really too bad that, that they didn't have a chance to go this year, because it's, it's a well-rounded competition. Students are able to go and compete in many different areas of science. Uh, it's a lot of hands-on, it's a lot of creativity. They do multiple, uh, multiple things. Sometimes they build things here, um, they also take tests while they're there. And students are really probably excited by the things that they can do, and they can compete as a team, they can compete as individuals, they can win medals. It's really a, a good opportunity. Ideally, it'd be nice if we could have both. Um, so, um, I think you would find that, that teachers would be interested in helping out the kids with both, if, if there were lots of them.
Anything further? Joe?
What kind of funds are we talking? Approximately, you don't have to...
Approximately?
Eight hundred dollars or something?
You've got bus, busing funds, and then... No, I didn't, I didn't think so. I've, I've got, I've got a sheet here. We're looking at people travel, which is about eight hundred dollars, um, materials and supplies, which is about two hundred dollars. And then, um, there was a coach's salary last year, which I'm not even sure that that was twelve hundred for them. Okay?
Thank you.
I think that is on the band cover, the, the sheet too, which are, and so where it talks about budget, but it doesn't have the coach's salary.
So we're looking at, what I was trying to get at, thank you, is that looking, approximately the same amount of money for both?
Science Olympiad and the Solar Olympics.
So if a person wanted to be paying both, you'd have to come up with another approximately two thousand dollars. Is that, am I about right on that? Thank you.
Any further comments? Questions?
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate the partnering with WPS, and uh, looking at new ventures and figuring out money. So, thank you very much for coming.
Okay, um, moving on to high school honors math. Mr. Bell, please.
I'll just start real quick. Last summer, we had a series of meetings with the secondary math faculty, and uh, then we came to the Board in the fall and shared with the Board the result of what those meetings produced. And uh, basically, that had to do with resequencing the secondary math offerings. And it was, uh, received well by the Board, if I recall, and one of the suggestions made by the Board was to take a look at the possibility of an honors math track. And uh, we had several subsequent meetings with the uh, secondary math faculty, and discussed the pros and cons of doing such an initiative, and discussed also all the variables that we could think of as a group that would be connected to this between where we are today and eventual implementation. And Dom Bellfiore is prepared here to share what we come up with, with the math faculty here at the high school. And Janet Ordall, I'm sure, can help as well. So, Dom?
Janet's only here tomorrow, so... Uh, we came up with a proposal. Uh, it was to meet the advanced students at Merrill High School. And I guess it's only a selected few, but it's something that I think would be a great benefit to the school. I look at the projected date, would be uh, two thousand two, two thousand three school year. And I, I just have an outline I gave to the board members, so they can just quickly look through the timeline. Uh, the curriculum maps will be developed, uh, will develop honor maps at the end of two thousand one, two thousand two school year, and need a time in the summer, just in case we don't finish it during the school year. Uh, the reason for the late start, due to ordering the textbooks for the, for the upcoming year, we have to change the current maps. We are gonna teach it out of order from what we're doing right now, so it just might be some shifting, some things around, but we need to change them. And we're gonna do that throughout, uh, hopefully start this summer and finish up throughout the next year. Materials we need, we're gonna use the same books that we're gonna order for next year. And the possible change in the material would be, we're gonna go at a faster pace, so we'll cover a couple of additional things. One thing I think would be, an asset as a teacher would be graphic calculators. I'm looking for, hopefully, two classroom sets, one for each class in Algebra one and Algebra, uh, Algebra two and pre-calc honors. The calculators we borrow to the student for their personal use outside of the classroom, so we'll give them a calculator. We'll have to figure out, maybe they ask, ask for a deposit or something, so we're guaranteed to get them back. Uh, the rationale for the graphic calculator, most honors students will attend college, and to use graphic calculators will prepare them for higher, higher-level math courses in college. Most, most colleges require and depend on the use and knowledge of graphic calculators in their upper-level math classes. And I guess that's why if you, we look at, we're looking at the price of Rome, what is it, about three thousand, six thousand, six thousand dollars, I think we're looking at, for graphic calculators. The courses that we're looking at is honors geometry, honors Algebra two, honors pre-calc, and then we already have a calculus class right now. Uh, we're not looking at honors Algebra one, 'cause it's currently being taught at the middle school. Each honor class will replace one section of a regular class, so we're not, we're not adding new sections, we're replacing one. Honor students will be selected, and a letter will be sent home, inviting the student to participate in the honors course, and that'd be twenty-five to thirty students. The process of picking the students will involve teaching... The process of picking the students will involve teacher recommendation, grade in the previous class, the motivation of the student, and all enrollments will be verified by the math department chair. And I guess what we mean by that is, I want the, basically, the final say, you're going to let it in. I don't want the guidance to put them in, I don't want the administration to put it in. I want the final say, because, or if not me personally, I'll talk to everyone in our department, say, what do you think of this student? Think they can make it in the honors class? And if they say yes, then I'll say yes, they can be admitted in. We'll sit down as a department, discuss who's going to be admitted or who's going to be picked to be an honors man. I guess that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Any questions on the honors math? Louise.
I just want to know, how does the honors geometry differ from what I remember as enriched geometry?
Um, right now, basically the same thing.
For years, we haven't had the enriched geometry?
Because those kids went, they, they got the geometry in ninth grade, or actually it was in, yeah, ninth grade over at this building. When we flip-flopped and came over here, the ninth grade just winning with everybody else. But it was, it would be the same as years ago.
So it's not going back again?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
If you start this in two thousand two, two thousand three, are you phasing it in one course of the year, or could you start the honors geometry and the honors algebra at the same time, since they don't build on each other?
We're, we're looking at start it all at the same time. We talked earlier this year and we decided that there's enough students right now to start it next year, but we're not, we don't want to start it next year, we want time enough to prepare for it. So we, our goal, or at least my goal or plan, is to start it all at once, all three classes.
That was my other big impatience, sort of, I just wondered if there was any way to start it, it seems like such an excellent idea to start it soon.
I, I, I want to say no right now. Just the way that schedule's all lined up and, and I understand your point, but right now I'm going to say no.
I think it's important too for the board, all the boardrooms to understand if we kind of back mat anytime we want to do curriculum implementation, so if it's of an interest to any of us to do this, specifically for high school administration, high school guidance, a decision would have to be finally, completely finalized and understood by the end of November on any given year to do an implementation the following year, and then we would have to make a commitment to do the work that's ready to do that. And that, that, that's the case because of course selection materials that are developed and published, developed in November, published in December at the high school.
Any further questions?
The money for the calculators, is that, it has building?
Well, I'm hoping Mr. Kulp's is here, he's going to overbudge utilities. I don't know where it's going to come from. I don't know. And that, and I, I personally think I'd like to add the graphic calculators, and I look at, the graphic calculators to math as word processors to English, and we supply the computers for the students when they need them, and I like to supply the calculators to students.
Thank you. Did you have?
Yeah, a couple of things, actually, Martha raised a good point, I'm not quite clear on the answer yet, so.
Okay.
Let me just ask this of you, Don, or whoever, the six thousand dollars that I saw listed there, for those, is this courses dependent on those?
I'm hoping so. I'm hoping that we're going to use it as a teaching tool. We can, my goal, at least I see it as, I'm going to show them how to graph a certain type of parabola or a U-shaped line, and once they get the general understanding that every equation's going to look like this, they can go to the calculator and say, okay, this is what it's going to look like, let's get all the information off there I can. We can buy other equipment to go with it and we use, retrieve data or whatever we might want to do. It's, it's useful, I've used them before in different schools.
I certainly support the concept tonight, but I'm a little concerned about the amount of money when we're in the.
Well, I agree with that.
Situation we're in now with deficits.
Do they depend on it?
I would say the course would not be dependent upon it. I mean, like, scratch the course just because you don't get the calculator, I wouldn't go that far, but it would be very, very useful.
Very useful to, for learning. The other thing I'd like to just make a comment on, I liked your statement there too on number four, the process of picking the students will involve all of the following, and then the last one, when you added the department period, not just the department chair, would it have final say, would be the department?
Would be the department, yeah, I should probably just take out department, but.
I just thought that was.
In the end, I think we'll sit down as a department and that the department person will say, we as a department agree that this person should be admitted.
Thank you, and I, I think it's an excellent idea. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Any further questions or comments?
One more, again, just for the knowledge of the board, I did share this proposal with the administration, and it was also shared with leadership council as well tonight, Don, with that. So it's gone through our local bureaucracy.
Thank you.
I think with the understanding that most of the students that take these classes going to college will need to have a graphic calculator, they're going to buy one at some point anyway, with, what's the wisdom of not having?
I, I guess, we can't require them to buy it, but we can strongly recommend them, if they're going to be in this class, please purchase this calculator. Most students, once they look at it and say, this might be a wise investment, they're going to use it in college, we're going to, we're not going to pick the, the best one out there, but we're going to pick the ones that can be useful in college also. They won't be able to afford the best one also. So we're looking at, hopefully, if we can buy sixty calculators, maybe, for example, find one of the students and say, I like this calculator at the end of the year, can I buy it from you? Yeah, you can buy it, maybe at a discounted price or something, so we can replace it, something like that.
Do any of the math classes now use the graphic calculator?
The calculus has a classroom set, and I think the pre-calc, they share them.
So the school does have some?
Some, yes. I don't know, how many?
I think there's two classroom sets. Sean Schultz and I both have a classroom set, and, and I offer it first to my calculus kids, and if they have one or don't want one, then I send it down to the pre-calc kids and rent them, or I should say, use them for the year. And I make agreement that, that they sign their name, that if you don't bring it back, then you owe me X number of dollars, and they, I've only lost one, I think, but.
Has there been an issue with anyone not being able to get one or afford one then, with the classes that you'd be using for now?
It comes up every single year, that they don't want to spend that amount of money. Can they, can't they? I never looked into it that deeply. I mean, I take that into consideration when I lend them out.
And the other question, if you're raising the bar here and you have honors pre-calc, will that change your calculus class curriculum as well, or will that not?
Right now, I don't think so.
It may increase the numbers by a couple, because for the most part, the twenty-five, thirty kids that are selected in seventh grade right now to be that advanced group, I think will basically be that same group that goes through, adding, subtracting a couple. Prokhor schools, you always have to consider, a couple of those jump in. Couple, couple of kids that are missed for whatever reason, or developed late or whatever, double up on helping tools if they're geometry the same time, so they can jump in. I have kids right now that, I had a ninth grade in geometry that aren't taking calculus now, so we lose a couple along the way, but I think basically it'll be about the same number, it won't change much. But how do you know?
Judy, did you have a question?
I have a question. Have you explored the avenue of asking a company to supply the calculators?
Well, I, I guess this, I don't have the knowledge to find someone to do it right now, and I don't know who to start asking. I've looked and grants on the computer, I haven't found anything out there.
What company would interest them?
Uh, the Texas Instrument.
Because perhaps if you wrote a letter to Texas Instrument and asked if you, if you could, if they could donate sixty, that this instrument is going to provoke future sales because of the kids that are going to go on school using these. It's a, a marketing tool for them, and if they couldn't donate the sixty, maybe they donate thirty if they purchase thirty.
And I'm just going back, we bought some calculators for the sophomore testing from them, and that was around three hundred calculators or two hundred calculators, and they didn't donate anything.
Did you ask them?
I guess I won't know. I won't know if we did or didn't. But they gave us a discounted price on it, and that's what we're hoping will happen this time, that we have the discounted price.
Good with your answer, Judy?
Thank you.
Anything else?
I guess I misunderstood your question, which you asked before. If the sequence is honors geometry, honors algebra, honors pre-calculus, would your calculus senior year be different because of the honors course?
No, it, it's, it's going to be set up where if you're regular pre-calc or honors pre-calc, you can still take calculus, even if you're not in honors class. But what we're trying to do is, we're trying to give the advanced students that are sitting in the classroom right now, being bored because they understand everything, we want to push them a little bit more.
Okay, I guess what I'm asking, if you're, if you're peaking up the honors pre-calculus, do you then also have to be, be taught with the calculus in the final year?
We had a discussion among the entire math faculty, and in the context, not just of calculus, but in, in the entire sequence of the three, and the, the general agreement among the faculty was, we're going with additional depth and additional coverage at every level, including calculus. That was, that's what.
This is my first year teaching calculus this year. I guess I've been reading that one up, up for grants. I mean, could I go in more depth? I, I'd have to see what the kid, what the student is when they come in. I don't have a whole lot of background.
Generally, you have to do an assessment of, of those students as they come, as they finish pre-calc, and do an assessment of performance, reteaching, what you got through certain areas, and then monitor and adjust, and go in greater depth or greater coverage as a result of where the students are at. That, that is the, the essence of that discussion.
Thank you, Don, for that good time.
If I just may piggyback on what Don just said also, from college professors who teach calculus, their biggest complaint is that there is not enough depth in the algebra, not in the calculus concepts, but in the algebraic concepts, and I see what will happen here is they will be able to go into more depth on those algebraic concepts, which helps you down the road on that calculus.
Okay, everybody comfortable with the subject. Thank you very much for your presentation, we appreciate it, and we will move on to elementary facility referendum report.
Okay, I'll start off. Back in October, it was an October twentieth meeting, the board established its goals, and one of the goals that the board established was to establish an elementary facilities improvement referendum committee that would address the needs of the six non-1996 referendum schools, which are Maple Grove, Scott, Jefferson, Washington, Pine River, and Midway. The board also went on to recommend who would be on that committee. They talked about the principals and myself and some PTO members. So we, and some board members. We had on that committee Lynn Zentner from the board and Ron Bane from the board, we had Pam Kirchball on that committee, we had Brian Fouts, the maintenance on that committee, and myself. And then we had the principals. There are, there started out to be four principals, but as you know, there are only three principals at those buildings now. So for Scott and Jefferson, we had Fritz Lurkey, for Midway and Pine River, we have Paul Kupel, and for Maple Grove, originally Karen, and now, and then she took on Washington as well. So those were the principals involved. I'll let those people introduce their PTO members, I know some of the PTO members that were involved were here. But what they did, what we did is we held a meeting, at the first meeting, was about a month after that, November sixteenth, and we talked a lot about how are we going to accomplish, first of all, what is this task? What does the board really mean? What do they really want us to do? And once we established that, then we talked about how are we going to accomplish this task? And that's really what the first meeting was about. We didn't talk at all about what any kind of a recommendation would be. What kind of documents do we need? What did the board mean? Where are we going to go with this and how are we going to accomplish this? So we, we did several, we used several documents. One of them was the five-year plan, which a lot of the older board members has seen several times. It's a kind of an ongoing plan that I do with the maintenance staff and the, and the custodians to talk about if we had money, what would we do in the next five years to improve things around here, maintenance around here. So we used that as one of the documents. We all went all the way back to the strategic planning document. If you remember during strategic planning, we had a facilities committee that actually started before strategic planning and did an awful lot of groundwork, used an architect as, as, as a source for knowledge, and spent a great deal of time putting together a facilities plan, which kind of led to all of our original referendums that we had. That was way, way back in, I don't know, when was it called, eighty-nine, ninety?
Ninety-two, I think.
Ninety-two, okay. I think that's, I think that, the reason I say that is because I think that facilities committee started in ninety-one, before the actual strategic planning. A building in ninety-one? Okay, yeah, there. We also, during the process of doing some of those original referendums, had several studies done by Bray Architects, and we used some of those as well in this process. So we had a fair amount of documentation. What happened then was we, we had the individual teams of principals and department, PTO people and custodians look at their own buildings, look at all the documents, work with me, and decide what are the most critical issues at their buildings independently. Then we came back together as a committee and we decided that we were going to tour all of the buildings as a committee, so that the people from Pine River could show us what, what they had on paper, they could show us physically. What is this? What kind of shape is it in? How is that compared with the shape it is at Midway? You know, so it's not just their opinion, so it's the whole committee getting to see everything at every one of the schools. So we did that, and then we came back together at a couple of different meetings and argued and talked and whittled and figured out how we were going to come up with a recommendation for the board. So what you're going to see tonight is you're going to look at a, each individual school is going to give you an idea of what their recommendation to the board is for their individual school, and then I'll talk about how we put that all together at the end. Okay? Any questions this part? You have the packet of the individual recommendations. It looks like this. I can give you at the end, this in a smaller format, so you can see it all on two pieces of paper if you're interested, but we can start out with Maple Grove, because that's the first one in this package.
Okay, and I will introduce to you Todd and Renee Frederick, our parents' representatives that are going to be presenting tonight.
And we just have pictures. In the middle, or where are you going? And he's sort of, can you go ahead? Keep that to you. I just need to get this.
Renee's just handing out a, an old diagram, diagram of what was proposed in anyone?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just giving you an idea of what, what our end proposal is going to be. Basically, Maple Grove, the, the school itself is in pretty good shape. However, the items we're going to be talking about are items that we feel are maintenance, expensive maintenance needs and safety issues. The first one on the board that you're going to see is picture one, that's just a view from the north of the building. That picture illustrates how the water and snow can build up on the flat roof section of that building as it comes off the hip roof. That's one of the major problems we have out there at the school. The flat roof is not insulated, so the water and snow come down, it builds up in the eve, and last winter we went out, we looked at it, it was roughly three and a half feet high of ice, and when it breaks loose, you can ask any of the kids, they all jumped, it's scary, and it literally lifts up on the eaves on the hip roof. So there's a problem there, and the flat roof, that really needs to be addressed.
And the other thing is, is that's where our main entrance is, that's where the kids go in and out, is under that load of snow.
So that's the main entrance and the one, yes.
Thank goodness we have the janitor we have, because he's out there all the time.
The next issue is the windows on the building. I really believe, we all agree that they need to be replaced. For instance, pictures two and three will show you the north windows, and those are in the first and second grade. These are inefficient, they're just basically putted in the wood. They are insulated units, but they're not glazed in very well. That really needs to be addressed. And picture three shows a first grader, my son, standing next to the window as it's open. That is the main through way for the kids when they come out to go to recess or get on the buses, that's where the buses come in.
They have a regular process where the teachers go, windows open, windows close, and then the kids are going in and out.
It's just a matter of time, some little kid's going to get his head knocked on one of those windows. And then picture six and seven, that's an interior and exterior view of the kindergarten windows.
Original building?
Great, those are over sixty years old. I'm guessing.
They're more or less original, so that's nineteen?
Nearly nineteen hundreds.
Nineteen oh four or something.
We're guessing, yeah. But they're rather drafty, that's the kindergarten room, and the kids do get a little cold when they sit there. The third item, picture five, shows a huge hole with a cover. Now, this is an item of. hole with a cover. Now, this is an item of jokes, but, and it was not on, on the list that I seen, but, but after I was out there cooking sap with the kids, I think that's a huge problem. That picture doesn't really give the full viewer, or the idea, but that hole's four feet deep.
You could lose a whole child in there.
Yes, you can. And my understanding is.
And sometimes you think, oh.
We can't afford to lose that. And, and I think, well, one of the problems is the tall ship out there is in Marathon County, and I know they won't take care of it.
They're supposed to.
They're supposed to. I'm just bringing it up because I think it needs to be handled. Picture eight, nine, and ten, so floor conditions, some of the floor coverings in there. In our meeting, it was agreed that it's gonna be handled over years with the standard maintenance budget. But we wanted to make, to show that to everybody. Kids' hand trainings are tripping over the duct tape now, so. Number five, this side of the picture, but it needs to be addressed, and that's on heat systems. There are two separate heating systems in the school. One is hot water drinks and the other one's steam. Is that correct? And I don't believe they're as efficient as they could be. One did go out this past winter for one day. Greg's wonderful maintenance department took care of that the very next day, and we appreciated that, but it was a very cold, cold day. And I guess our concern is what happens next time when they can't get a part of it. So that's, that's something that we feel needs to be done. And then, I guess the biggest issue that we all talked about would be the handicap accessibility in the school. Pictures one, twelve, thirteen will show the, the problems that, although we don't have a problem with code right now, that's only a matter of time. The handicapped child should come in and wanna go to Maple Grove, as Greg, I believe I'm correct here. They have to make accessibility for that child. If you can't convince the parents to take their child into another school.
Actually, the new law, the old law stated that if we could convince the parents to go to a different school, we'd be, we'd be home free. The new law just says our buildings need to be handicapped accessible.
Some of the pictures you'll see on there, I believe, if I have it right, picture eleven, that shows the steps leading from the main hallway to a stair landing in a hallway, which then leads you to another stair which goes to the basement. We have a third grade class that's in the basement. And although we currently meet code because we have two exits out of the basement, I believe that that eventually is going to be a problem. We have currently five different elevations to worry about in that school. We have steps that lead down to the gym, we have steps that lead to the basement, we have steps that lead up from the hallway into the library, and the stage, yeah, from the gym to the stage. We did, I did, I called a state inspector to, in our last meeting, we were a little fuzzy on why they would make us put an elevator to the basement if we tried to get that classroom out of there, I guess. To me, that's a huge expense that's not necessary. And the gentleman I spoke to agreed with that. So we don't necessarily have to make the basement handicapped accessible if we were to pull that classroom out and use that.
And, what was the other thing?
And then, yeah, and we did discuss, we still have the problem with the going to the gym and then from the gym to the stage. But that can possibly be handled with a, with a handicap lift or something of that nature, which wouldn't be as expensive. And that's what we have.
Are there any questions for anyone on the Maple Grove school? Does anybody have any comments or questions? So when you have on this sheet, provide handicap accessibility four hundred thousand, and then move the third grade out, four hundred and forty thousand. If you were to move the third grade out, we would have to spend the four hundred thousand?
Well, that's to move them into a new addition to the building, to start out of the basement.
So, but it would be one or the other, then? Would you have to spend the four hundred thousand for the handicapped accessibility?
Well, that's the issue.
That's the issue.
That's what we're trying to find out.
That's what we talked to.
Right.
I don't think you'd need anybody to sign on.
I would.
Joe, did you have a comment?
Well, that was a good, good point, Pat. And I wanted to elaborate or piggyback on that a little bit too. First of all, what's the total cost here? Do we have a bottom line?
We'll, we'll, we'll go through that at the end.
On this, on this school? While we're on it, do you have the, for this school building?
We didn't do it that way.
You didn't do it that way.
Now, there's a reason why we didn't do it that way, because our recommendations are for all of the schools.
I understand. But I, I guess at the end, I'm gonna wanna know what each school is costing. The other thing, Greg, I'd like to direct this to you, is sometime back, and I don't know if you've been able to get the information yet or not about the stairs in the basement.
That's what the handicapped accessibility is.
No, what I asked you about though, sometime back at a regular board meeting was, and I thought you were gonna get it for us this year, was what would be the cost of putting stairs in, because I believe, irregardless of whether we currently meet code and stairs at that, in that, with that basement, with kids in that basement, I have said before, I find it to be a real safety concern for me, because it's an old building, it's very dry and brittle, as far as I'm concerned. If it goes up in flames, those kids are gonna have a tough time getting out of the basement. So have we ever gotten a price on this?
I explained that to you at a board meeting that, and I'll just try to refresh your memory a little bit.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
When I, when I pursued that with the state, to do that kind of remodeling, I would need to submit a plan to the state. And the gentleman at the state, the state inspector said, if you do that kind of remodeling, you need to make the entire building handicapped accessible.
Okay.
And then the board, the board then directed me to get this price, I'm making the building entirely handicapped accessible. And I went to, if you remember Fred Drews, who used to work for Bray Associates?
Yeah.
When, when we did the project here.
Yeah.
He's now retired, so he's a little cheaper. He's actually the one that did that study for us, with engineers, to determine the total, the total handicap accessibility of that building.
So it would or would not include the basement?
Yes.
Okay. And you were right, I refreshed my memory, that's exactly what happened. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
In order of your packet, then, Midway would be next.
Yeah. County State, who is the PTO president, could not make it tonight, but her and I and Joe Harker, our custodian, went through Midway. Midway is structurally a very sound building, and we have the space that we need. We have, it's, it's utilized very well by the Gleason community, so there's not a lot of major needs, other than the, the windows and the doors. Do you remember, even I think a year ago, we talked about the windows, all the building's windows were kind of the, initiated this, this conversation for non-referendum schools, because the windows are a common thread throughout all the schools, that we need new, new windows. And the same at Midway. The septic system you see is a major expense. I believe it's the original septic system from nineteen sixty-one. And so I feel that that is a, a time bomb waiting to happen. And we're too far away from the village of Gleason to tap into their septic system. So we are going to need, like we had to do at Pine River a couple of years ago, we are gonna eventually need a, a new septic system. And if we could work it into a referendum, I think that would be, we'd be saving money in the long run doing that. The rest are, so those are the things that we felt that we must have on top, and the rest are just various wants that, throughout the building.
Add on to what Paul said, the buildings that were built in that same vintage Pine River and Scott, and not Maple Grove, Maple Grove was built earlier.
It's for people, not just kids. I'd be concerned about this rest of the stadium in the building.
Any other questions, June?
Um, Greg, do you know if we can still do a conventional septic system out there? Because they changed so much with zoning. You know, zoning laws have really changed our conventional septic systems. And if, you know, if you, if you change any of that, you might have to go to a holding tank, which is really running through some big dollars.
The possibility is a mound system or holding tank. We even, just to give you an example of how bad that ground is out there, we replaced the concrete, or the blacktop. And when we did that, it's the only school where we took out eighteen inches of dirt, put in new fill so that we could have some blacktop that wouldn't break up in a year. It's, it's pretty placeable. It's amazing that it's lasted this long, actually, but.
Yeah, because it, it might run into more money than this.
It would be, that's, that's the cost for the mound system at Scott and Pine River, so it's about the same as that.
Any other questions or comments on that? Thank you. Roger Jefferson?
My representation, and the parents weren't able to be here tonight either, so I will just give you a quick rundown. I have a handout here with some photographs in there to give you a little bit of visual as far as how Jefferson looks. Structurally, Jefferson is in very good shape. Out of the far older schools, Jefferson is one of the newer ones. The thing that we really need to look at with Jefferson is just basic upkeep maintenance, some of the things that we really need to change. Also, the duty or the job description of Jefferson Building has changed dramatically over the last few years. We've added a lot of services that we needed to create space for. And a lot of those services right now are kind of making a bust at the seams just a little bit. And another big concern is replacing the two portables that we have at Jefferson. They're becoming a large maintenance issue. They're becoming a real safety concern with the kids going back in and out. And it's becoming houses for, oh, I don't know, various animals in the area, things like that. We had a trapper out there to take care of one of them, because he didn't smell so great, squirrels, cats, just about everything's been living under there at one time. And I haven't been there in a year. So just to give you an idea, if you take a look at the first one, one of the big things that's very common across all of the buildings, along, like what Paul says, a window is an electrical upgrade. We didn't do real well when we had the fire inspection come through and take a look at all the extension cords and outlet strips and everything that we've had to have in our buildings in order to maintain the computers, the TVs, VCRs, radios, a lot of the things now that we have that we weren't able to, or that we didn't plan for four years ago when we built our buildings. This is not an untypical view of one of our classrooms. A lot of the classrooms, I did a survey, most classrooms have at least four or five computers. And I mean, elementary teachers are notorious for pack ratting and getting every computer, it's ever thrown away to use in their classrooms, do whatever. And at Jefferson, they really are utilized a lot. They do a great job. A big space need, if you flip over to the next page, you take a look at, just a basic idea of what the open concept design at Jefferson's like. You just have the main area in the middle of the building, which houses the library, Title I room, computer lab, open area that we have for kids that do common work, common planning. It's start, it's starting to be kind of a real space concern. We're running out of room in the library, we're talking about how we can maybe reconfigure that to get some more space. We have a large pit area that's right in the middle by the library, that's kind of a safety concern with the steps there. Trying to figure out a way that we can move over our, our library, things like that, try and create some more space, a little bit more of a safety issue. If you flip over, you take a look at our Title I guided reading bookroom, which is at one end of our open hall. Guided reading for those that are new to the elementary aspect of reading. You have common books that are leveled at different levels for kids. We have one area where we put a lot of those books, so that teachers can all come down and utilize them. We need the space to house those books and the materials that go with them, as well as the title teacher. And that takes up an awful lot of space at the one end of the hall. Piggybacking a little bit on what Paul said, if you flip to the next one, is the picture one of our doors. That white line at the bottom is the crack where you can see out and where the snow blows in, things like that. Not really efficient, not in really good shape. We need to take a look at replacing some of those. And if you flip over to the next page, you can take a look at the, looking down on one of the other doors, if you're a standard look down, you can look through the door to the ground below. It's pretty cost prohibitive trying to replace that door, because we basically, the cost to do that, we might as well replace the entire door. And the cost to do that is just too much. It's too expensive. One of my big concerns right now, I've been trying to figure out a way to accommodate, if you flip over to the page that says safety concerns, right now, there are no locks on any of the classroom doors at Jefferson's. In our climate and culture now, in the event of an intruder, safety concern, the plan is to go to a lockdown. We can't go to a lockdown. We have no locks to lock the doors. We have classrooms, and here's an example, this is a regular third grade classroom, there's no door. There are temporary walls that, a couple of them, if you pushed hard enough, we could probably knock the wall right over if you needed to. That's a real concern, just safety wise right now, because we don't have a backup plan. And the only other thing you do is evacuate them, we do that. You either shove them through a crack in a window that's about six inches wide, or you make them all run through the common hallway, which would not be a real good thing either. So that is a major concern we need to take a look at. And if you just look at a lot of the other things, that are very, just very small maintenance things. Taking a look at silicone ceiling, replacing the carpeting. We have seams in our carpeting that are right now held together by glue gun. We just take and run the glue through the fill the crack and try and hold the edges down as much as possible. Some of the cracks are inch, inch and a half wide. And we found that just works a little bit better than the duct tape, where we've had that down in floor two a couple of times. You know, a little idea, we'll have our custodian stop. It's something to look at. Any questions?
Any questions about Jefferson? Joe?
Sorry about that, tonight I got a lot of questions on these things. Chris, you're talking about three classrooms added, and I heard you mention something about all the animals underneath the portals. So with the three classrooms, are you proposing then to remove the portals?
We'd like to. That'd be, that'd be the best case scenario.
How many portals do you have?
Two.
So with the addition of these three classrooms, you would remove the portals, is that right?
We'd remove the two portals, and we'd be able to move those classrooms inside the building, which I think is where they belong. Right now, we have a kindergarten, they're out there all day, except when they come in for the specials and lunch.
The other question about that, you said there's no locks on any of the classroom doors?
Correct.
Which also gives me concern in the event that we have an intruder in the building. But the other concern that I have, you realize that this is not gonna be answered overnight. These proposals the board's gonna look at and make a recommendation or decision on. You must have some kind of a backup plan.
We do have a backup plan.
Excuse me, I don't wanna know what it is, but you must have some kind of a backup plan in the event that there is an intruder in that building, you can get those kids out of there one way or another, do you not?
We do, but like I said, our, our backup plan is now is to have them walk out the classroom doors, out the doorways. And in our situation, if you stood in the middle of the hallway in a computer lab, you can look to every classroom door, you can look to every single spot where kids would be coming out. That is our concern. You can't put them out through the windows. You know, one person said, if we open up the windows, there's not enough space. So you either leave them in the classrooms, or they come out through there. That's the only plan we have.
So just a suggestion, because this was, you know, even if this goes to referendum, it's gonna be a while before it gets handled. I would like to see a proposal come back for locks on those doors in those classrooms that are secure enough to protect those kids in those classrooms until something is done by this district to, to help that. That gives me a little concern. You never know when it's gonna happen or what's going to happen.
And I've talked to, you know, I've talked to the police and things like that, just to get some feedback. They're the experts. There's not a whole lot of options.
Well, I see you've got a real dilemma, so Mr. Henry, can I like to ask that we get some kind of a proposal back on that temporary measure to put some security there for these folks? Thank you.
Would that be the thirty-two hundred dollars that's on here, is Greg, or you're costing out of the locks?
Right.
So that, that would be the cost, even on the present doors, if the doors were not removed?
That'd be the rough cost. Paul Prue has been in adjusting a couple locks recently just by chance. And that would be about the cost, but then again, to add into that concern, we have classrooms without doors. You know, so we need a door, we need a wall to put the door on.
But at least you could put those kids in a classroom with a door.
There is not.
Had a door that locked.
If I had, if I had a door in those classrooms, right now, every classroom, every classroom is utilized. And that one just happens, there's no door.
You have to remember, this building was built as an open concept building, and had, was originally built, and with no walls in it at all. And there were some temporary walls, or movable walls, I guess I should say, that are in between some of the classrooms now. But the only, the only, other than the kindergarten, the only thing there is to divide the classrooms from the hallways are walls that have been built over the years by maintenance to close up the classrooms from the hallways. It was originally built as an open concept school. And then, when they did that, when they built those walls, they didn't build them completely shut. They built the wall across most of the classroom and left the last four or five feet open, because that's the way they wanted it then, is to try to shut most of the noise off from the hallways or from the, actually, if the building would have been left the way it was originally, there wouldn't be classrooms in our hallways, so you wouldn't have noise going in those classrooms. But when the building got full, all of a sudden, there were classrooms in the hallway. But when the building got full, all of a sudden there were classrooms in the hallways. So they were, they were no longer hallways, so then the classrooms started interfering with the classrooms that were supposed to be classrooms. Because there were no walls there. So you have to understand that this is a problem of the way that the original building was built back in nineteen seventy, was built as an open concept building.
Did you have another question?
I just need a little bit more clarification on that. See, I've been out there a couple of times, but I can't remember. You're saying that the classrooms that you have right now, now I'm not talking about the classrooms, the hallways that were made in the classrooms. I'm not talking about those. But I'm talking about the regular classrooms that that building had. Those don't have doors on them either?
There are many of those that don't even have, that didn't have walls separating them from the hallways.
So it's not just a matter of putting a lock on the door?
No, no.
Some of them don't.
That's why you see a price of five thousand for doors, doors and walls, and then another price for locks.
Oh, I see.
See Joe, when it was originally built, even between the classrooms, there weren't walls. You know, now there are dividing walls like, about like this, they're hooked to the floors, the ceilings. They divide the classrooms up, but originally that was not the case.
I thought I, I, now some of those classrooms do have doors on them, right?
Right. Most, most do.
Okay, now stop there just for a second. In that case then, do those, the most do's have locks on them?
No, no, none of them.
Okay, so then my original question stands, could we put locks on?
Sure.
On the ones that are in the hallways without the walls is a problem, right?
Judy, did you have a question?
Is there's an entry that might be able to be like a secured place? But is, is there an office close to the entry?
What we have is we, we have a, one office, which is, or our office is located right next to a hallway that goes out past the kitchen and a back door, which is our secondary door. And we have another uh, another, uh, our main entrance is down the hallway from where we are. And uh, if a person came in that one, that's our main entrance, nobody in the office can see them. And even, even to the point where if a, you know, heaven forbid, somebody came in with a gun, by the time they got to the office, we're in the middle of the building they're in. And there's not necessarily somebody, there's not necessarily somebody at that entrance all the time to keep from getting in. Plus, you need to have at least one door unlocked for parents or whoever, teachers, you know, things like that to get in and out. So once they, once they got to the office where we could see them, it wouldn't matter if they did. And then that would be our only, right now one of our recourse is we know we have a situation where if we're given a warning ahead of time, we lock all the exterior doors. You know, that gives us one solution, we can get the kids out of the classroom and get them in the middle of the building. But, once they get in, if you don't have any warning, we really don't have much of, much of a plan or a good one.
Any further questions on Jefferson? Move on to Washington?
I will introduce to Rich Flatow and Marie Wardell, who are going to, two staff members that are going to be presenting to Washington.
We've got a handout also, I'd like to pass that around that way. Marie was kind enough to do a video, so we're gonna, we're gonna turn over here. So if you're not, if you're not facing this way, if you'd like to turn your chair a little bit this way, so we're talking to everybody in the faces. We have the same concerns that uh, all the other schools have for windows, locks, doors, and all of those kind of things. But if you look, as everybody gets this sheet, if you look at the brief history of Washington School, I'd like to turn your attention to that. Because our real crunch is space. We need the windows, we need the doors, we need the locks, those all need to be replaced, but we really need more space. And I'm going to explain it, if you look, it says Washington School was erected nineteen fifty-eight with three classrooms. In nineteen sixty-one, there was an office, four more classrooms, a gym and a kitchen. And the interesting thing about that is it cost two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars at that time. Then, next in nineteen sixty-seven, there was a two-story addition above classrooms, storage space, multipurpose areas. That was two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars at that time. Then if you look down, current programs, after that was built, these programs then were added to Washington School. Art music, cognitive disabilities, primary cognitive disabilities, immediate learning disabilities, level one, speech and language. And if you look at speech and language, there's two clinicians, one is placed inside a wooden box right now. Now that's not, you know, it's a, it's a twelve-by-fifteen wooden box. The other speech clinician works in a hallway in a seven-by-seven foot cubicle with kids passing for lunch and gym and et cetera. The occupational therapist and physical therapist work in the hallway when the kids aren't passing from classes to classes. School psychologists test in the storage area. This is very similar to Franklin School and Lincoln School, as you recall, when the referendum was passed to build the high school, the middle school, and the bigger rooms. Uh, the guidance counselor has a tiny office by the uh, main office. The school nurse works in the hallway. This is going after lice, ticks, everything else in open view of everyone and anyone. The police, when they come in, have that same health care situation unless they go into Karen's office. Uh, reading recovery works in an open area, and if you know, I know you've had reading recovery presented to you. Uh, that's a real need for quiet and it's a one-on-one type thing. Uh, the computer lab is right next to the reading recovery, Title I area, so there's like four teachers in a, in a very confined space, maybe fifteen by fifteen. Uh, the instructional media center, library, which is used to read stories to the children and for the children to check out books and research. A lot of times there's classes passing to the gym, from the gym, to lunch, from lunch, et cetera, et cetera, while those are going on. And you'll see some of those on the video. Uh, the Sage program, as you're well informed of, we have four classrooms and seven Sage teachers. We also have a gifted and talented program, that means in an open area upstairs, and a bookroom, which has eliminated stories. So, uh, I've been in Washington twenty-six years and it just keeps getting more crowded and more crowded and, and more crowded. And uh, we really need more classroom space at, at Washington. Some offices to house the speech and language people and the guidance counselor, things like that. Uh, an elevator, we, we have a girl right now who's in a wheelchair, but uh, she's cerebral palsy and we work with a physical therapist to get her up the stairs with her parents' approval and it's written into her IP. But uh, it would be nice to have an elevator to be able to transport her up and down the stairs. And we're getting another, well, right now there's a, there's a question if we're going to get another handicapped child that was in a terrible accident out at Pine River this last fall. If you'll turn the page then, uh, this is kind of the schematic that Greg gave us at one of our meetings. And the shaded area now on the top, it says gym, one, two, three, four are the classrooms. OF would be the office spaces. Uh, right now, and Fritz can talk about this if he wants to, we lose some gym time because our gym is also our cafeteria. And we have fifteen different homerooms that have to go in and eat lunch, so that starts about ten forty-five. So Fritz always had to take his kids outside or the kids had to miss gym or he had to go in the classroom.
And it was also, one of the reasons why I talk so loud sometimes, because if you're in a small gym, loud kids, all day, many days. It's a pretty tiny space for uh, for a lot of that stuff.
You can stop talking about that.
So we could also use a multipurpose area there. Marie, if you'd like to show the video then, go through, she did a little PowerPoint presentation here, but we figured we could do both at the same time.
This is our technology.
There we go. Marie had a digital camera to do this and did a nice job of running around and then transferred it to a VHS. Try three or four. Or the TV, Rick.
You could tell us that's the main corridor with no lights.
There we go. Here we go.
This is one of the Sage classrooms right now. This is a girl that's in kindergarten right now, and she will be in one of these, in this room probably next year. The room is very crowded right now because it's split in half so that they can have their ratio.
Fifty minutes on each side, those are no management classrooms, pretty good.
There's not enough room to get through. Um, Amy Greifey is the aide that works with this little girl and she, she told us after we videotaped this, she said, "I do not bang her around that much," but she could not literally get through that classroom without banging her around. This is the other student that Rich was talking about earlier. She has to leave all of her classes, um, ten to fifteen minutes early so she can get downstairs before the rest of the class goes there. In an emergency case, Rich said, there's a couple of people that are trained in lifting her and getting her out of the building, but an elevator certainly would.
Fritz used to be, but he's not there.
Certainly would help. So this, she does have um, her walkers and a wheelchair strategically placed around the building. So when she's upstairs or downstairs or outside, there's always something there for her. And the little girl in the first scene too before, um, she, our computer lab is upstairs on the second floor. She has attended computer class two or three times the whole year because she too has to be carried up the stairs to get to the class. Her physical therapist was there the other day and she was able to go to computer class because her physical therapist carried her up the stairs. This is the one hallway along the library, um, along where the speech and language people were. This is coming in, um, either from a noon recess or a one-thirty recess. And, sorry, but the volume is a lot louder than, the kids are a lot louder than what you can hear them right now. In a little bit, I'll go into one of the, the small cubicle that Rich described, the seven-by-seven, where Becky Locamo is working with a primary student. And how she could hear him and he could hear her, I have no idea. This is her little cubicle where she works with students.
In the hallways right by the three door.
Yep, right on the other side of that. And it goes about up to here because I have the same cubicle on the other side of her for my office for the library. And then this is the other, um, what did you call it, Rich?
The box.
The box.
It's got many shapes inside.
That the other speech teacher works.
Midway used to work at this when she was, when she was our third grade teacher one year. Said that it moved down the hall.
And um, she had had the walls built higher in hopes that it would help with the noise. It has helped some, but it's still very noisy. She's got a retractable door.
The bell is right in her box. So where she sits at her desk, she's got the bell right there, and the bell has to go through five or six different classrooms down the hall. So she must be, she's going to be deaf by then.
This is the library, um, this is a first grade teacher that comes down to the library for her scheduled time because that's the only time that works out for her to come to the library. Um, on this particular day, and I apologize for the video, it's a two, um, there's a kindergarten class across the hall from here, which is all open. So we've got kindergarten kids running back to their classroom after gym. And we've got kids running down the hallway, getting back in and switching classes. So the noise level there is oftentimes, when I'm even in the library doing things with kids, you can't hear anything. So you just wait for the kids to leave the hallway and then you continue on. This is our reading recovery Title I area. It's very cramped for what they have there. Um, they have two um, teachers that work there and one aide. The other side of this wall is the computer lab. And on this particular day, the fifth graders were working on a program and it wasn't as loud as it usually gets. But it was loud when the kindergartners were working there earlier in the day. Um, it just depends on the volume of the computers and what's going on. So that's about it for the video, but um, that's pretty much it. Um, on the handout is just no pictures, but it kind of describes what happens. Um, we really need to meet our space needs at Washington and that would be by adding the classrooms and the offices. So the specialists have areas to work in and so that we can have some kind of confidentiality there for students and the like. Um, we'd like to see the second level of the building handicapped accessible by adding that elevator. As Rich said, we'll probably, we possibly will get another student that's in a wheelchair. We have one now that can't access the computer lab without extra help.
And you could always have a parent in a wheelchair too, that has the right to see their child's classroom. So you run into all kinds of concerns when you don't have an elevator. And we've talked about building an elevator at Washington since I came in nineteen seventy-five, so hasn't been done yet.
And then the final thing would be that addition of the separate gym so we could accommodate the higher classes. Um, we've been throwing around how to do breakfast better, um, just the lunch and indoor recesses right now. There's always a question of how we handle those type of things and have it be equitable for everybody. So that's what we see as the best thing to do for Washington School.
Thank you. Are there any questions on Washington School or comments?
I'd just like to comment that Washington School is the only in-city school that we have that's not handicapped accessible, totally handicapped accessible. Maple Grove is the other one. Those are the two schools in the district that are not totally handicapped accessible. Washington's the only one with handicap population that's not handicapped accessible.
No questions or comments? Joe?
Well, I'll just say that I've been in that school also and probably more than any other, because my kids went through that school. And uh, what they're showing us is facts, those little boxes exist.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Scott.
Mayor Jeff Corrigan. He and his wife Nancy, who's our PEO president, were on the committee with us. And he's going to take you through Scott and I'll just give out the handout.
After following Washington, I don't know if Scott School even compares to that, but uh, Scott School is a, is a very, very well-sound building. There's a few needs that, with all the buildings, new windows and doors and electrical upgrade is pretty much common throughout all the schools. And there is some tile that needs to probably look to be replaced. So uh, Mr. Lurkey put together a little photo array for you. So on the second page shows the storage room. That's the only storage room that's in Scott School. So you have all your supplies for your, everything in the storage room. It's, it's small and it was originally designed just for the kitchen table, or for the tables, the lunch tables to be put in. But now that, you know, over the years, things get added, so you, as you can see, it's really cluttered. And you turn to the next page, you see where the reading recovery teacher has her teaching room. It's inside the, it's inside the storage room for the, for the kitchen. So as you can see, the day when Fritz took the picture, you have the cook going in to get supplies for the lunch while she's trying to work with a student inside the reading recovery room. The next page is the hallway where kids that have to do additional things, miss a test or something, they're out in the hallway and testing the hallway. So they're, you know, they don't have the, the quiet that they need to do their, you know, their tests or whatever that they're, they're presently doing. The next page shows you the library, computer room, and the teacher work room, all combined into one, one room. So when you have kids in the library, a class, and kids in the computer room, you can see that there's, you know, lack of quiet is, isn't, you know, isn't there. I mean, it's loud and there's a lot of, you know, a lot of space you're getting kids jammed into. The library itself is, is not a big area. The next page shows you the, the work area in that same, this is in the same room with the computer room in the, in the library. This is the, the work area, along with storage space that they sort of rigged up in the, in the back along the wall there for more storage space. So it's uh, it's cluttered. The next picture shows you your, your electrical, the way things are in all the classrooms for electrical. You have a little plug-in, extension cord with everything running to that, that lets you know that the electrical is far from what you'd want. The next page just shows you the computers, the TV, the VCR, so you have a lot of things plugged in. And you're using power strips and you get, because in each classroom, there's only like three or four, if you're lucky, outlets in, in each room. And the last one shows you how your windows and, and the environment you get in because of the windows, the way it's conditioned they are. Now Scott School is a real sound school, it's a good school. And, you know, the wants, what we want to is, you know, or I should say a need and a want is an addition onto Scott School, which would also help out Jefferson because myself, my kindergarten- my kindergartner, my daughter goes to Jefferson and goes in those portables. And frankly, send my kid to school and have her go out to a portable, back into the school for lunch, back and forth throughout the day, I personally don't, don't like it. And I'm, you know, there's nothing I can do with myself, but that's one thing I don't think kindergartners should have to do. When it's raining, they gotta quick run to school, get into the school to go for lunch or to gym and run back out through when it's raining. And if there was a addition onto Scott School, which wouldn't be too hard, the kindergarten could be there, which would free up another room for Jefferson. You know, that's, to get rid of those portables would be the best thing. And like I say, if there was an addition onto Scott School, that would also help Jefferson's needs too because you're, you're eliminating one class over there. And also the more bathrooms, because if you'd have another class at Scott, the bathrooms out of there aren't really that big now. So, you know, if you add another classroom, you'd have to add on to more of the bathrooms and, but the most would be storage and a kindergarten and library room. But the overall Scott is, Scott is a good school and it just needs a little, little upgrading.
Thank you. Any questions on Scott? Are the windows original there?
They're a little different at Scott. Pine River, for instance, and the old, the old junior high here, this building, had R O W windows, built here in Bell where I've been at this school. But at Scott School, they actually have solid aluminum, not the kind of aluminum windows that you see now with some airspace and some insulation, but just plain aluminum like you see in Florida or in old Tampa. You know, they're solid aluminum with single pane glass.
Any further questions or comments? Tom?
Just a question about, probably you said needed, the needed construction. Did you say that would be a kindergarten classroom and library classroom or just library space or I wasn't sure what?
Well, the first page, you know, on the first page, it shows you your kindergarten class and your storage room. The next, below that would be your, you know, another additional add to that. You know, the first one just shows what the classroom and storage space construction would cost. But really that's, I, my feeling is that all should be always, is one need because the, like, just a kindergarten class in a, in the storage wouldn't really help the Title, the reading recovery or the Title One, because they're, you know, she's in that storage room in the kitchen. So I would think you'd also, also need some additional small rooms on that too because it's not right that kid has to be in the kitchen storeroom to, for reading recovery and...
But you can also look at it this way, Tommy, is right now our library and computer room are in a regular sized classroom. So you can approach it one of two ways, either leave that library and computer room in that area, build on a kindergarten room, or build a computer lab, library, turn the, what is now the library, computer lab into a kindergarten classroom. But uh, you know, at the same time, you know, make any other changes you might need.
Good, Tom. Ron, did you have something?
Yeah, that's one of the things that really stand out at Scott School is that room where the kitchen supplies and food is stored, where they have a classroom in there. But the other thing that stands out about the Scott School and this picture on the last page kinda um, doesn't give an accurate picture about those windows. When it's cold, there's frost, just like the old schools where you did artwork on the window.
And just like too, and uh, Ron and anybody who's been at Pine River, Midway, June, October, you know, and got a picture of a couple of little visitors there, it's, it's mad. I mean, there's a lot. You're scraping off the flies and now ladybugs off computers and things like that, you know, tractor lights. It's because they're not really efficient, you know, the doors and windows, things like that too. But uh, otherwise, pretty sound building. It's actually in really pretty good shape.
Joe? Just as a point of information, uh, I've been reading some good articles in the Total News and I'm just wondering if we're providing this information to any reporter that might be in the audience tonight and might want to write an article on these conditions. So if they don't have any, I would recommend let's give the Total News reporter a copy.
Thank you. Very good point, Rich Stephen. Um, any further comments on Scott? Pine River?
Jennifer Hites uh, having some issues with her father right now, so she couldn't make it as well, but uh, Ron worked with us as well as I had a, a committee of parents also work on this with Jennifer and I. And um, I'm sorry I don't have a handout like the other guys put me in shame. Um, yeah, Pine River unfortunately is not like Midway in that it is not, um, we do not have the same space that we have at Midway School. We do not have the same uh, structural integrity, I guess would be a best way to put it. It's a good solid building, but it was built too small. I don't think it was built, I think it was built a little cheaper. It's, it's about the same age as Midway School. Um, it was built by the gracious people of the town of Pine River who donated it then to the school district. Um, but the, the space is a critical need at Pine River. Like Midway with the windows and the doors again and the electrical upgrade and the same exact things as Midway as far as things, the nice things that we wish we could have, the tile replacement, the carpet, the sinks and those kinds of things. But at, at Pine River, we have a portable, um, that has both the library and the computer lab in. We'd like to get rid of the portable because like at Jefferson, we have critters that live under that portable and some of the critters die under that portable and make the portables not smell really good. But we like to uh, um, so we would like to uh, expand where the portable is out and in that new space, have a kindergarten room, have a multipurpose room where we could have a variety of activities. It could be art, it could be music, um, and also a library computer room. And um, the kitchen probably at Pine River is the smallest kitchen in the district. It's, we're feeding a hundred and thirty kids, it's smaller probably than all of our kitchens. So um, it's, it's a very small kitchen and so we need to upgrade that. It says reestablish parking because we park, we don't have a parking lot at Pine River. We kind of park on the road behind the building and if that was where the expansion was, we need to reestablish that. So Ron, do you have anything to, to add?
Pine River's probably got the most land for the most potential future and uh, that portable that was originally brought in there was the kindergarten class. But the kindergarten is, well, you know, there you are, separated from the rest of the school basically. And so then the switch was made and now the library computer room, which means a lot more kids go in and out. Uh, we have very good facilities right there, ready to build in case the district so decides. But the main thing that you gotta realize about Pine River and these older schools is the windows, the doors, they're still the original ones. And that's why in all of these schools, you see the must list that has to be taken care of. Electrical upgrade, we're not probably as bad as other schools, but boy, you sure don't want to fall behind because you never catch up and it don't take much for disaster to happen in any one of these schools if your electrical isn't up to par. That's about all I have to ask, add to it, except that the pride in Pine River is probably as strong, if not stronger than a lot of these others, Midway, Maple Grove, Scott. And yes, we know that we want the school to stay open. Uh, the community is looking for a number of different ways to help make it more efficient. Um, so that is one thing you don't have to worry about, is people not having pride in their elementary schools in any one of these areas.
Any other questions on Pine River? Greg?
No, not Pine River specifically, but I think that's a second one.
Uh, no questions on Pine River, then back to Greg.